It is six o'clock PM. I call this meeting of the Miami Township Board of Trustees to order. If you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I want the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Posey.
President.
Mr. Berry.
Here.
Mr. Culp.
Here.
Reading of Casualties, Chief Nielsen.
Yes, sir. Parole Agent Joshua Byrd with the California Department of Corrections with an end of watch of July 17th, 2025. And Detectives Joshua Kelly, Victor Lemus, and William Osborne, all with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, all with an end of watch of July 18th, 2025. And Police Officer Philip Wagner with the Lorraine, Ohio Police Department, end of watch on July 24th. Sheriff's Deputy Elijah Ming with the Wyandotte County Sheriff's Office in Kansas with an end of watch of July 26th. Police Officer Diderul Islam with the New York City Police Department, end of watch on July 28th. Lieutenant Albert Stout Jr. with the Robstown Police Department in Texas with an end of watch of August 6th. Police Officer David Rose with the DeKalb County Police Department in Georgia with an end of watch of August 8th. Sergeant Kenneth Salis with the Spokane County Sheriff's Office in Washington with an end of watch of August 9th. Sergeant Caleb Isworth with the Baton Rouge Police Department with an end of watch of August 10th. Sergeant Ryan Hudson with the Paducah Police Department, Kentucky, with an end of watch of August 12th. Trooper First Class Dennis Ricks with the South Carolina Highway Patrol, end of watch August 13th. And Police Officer Suzanne Oh with the Maui County Police Department, Hawaii, with an end of watch of August 15th.
Please join me in a moment of silence for these fallen first responders. Thank you. Before I hand it over to Chief Nielsen, I'd like to recognize retired Township Administrator Ron Hess in the audience tonight. It's nice to see you back at a meeting again. Would you like to take the podium and say a few words? All right. Chief Nielsen, you have the floor.
Okay, I'm going to turn it back over to Chief Hess. So, sir, come on up. Oh, are you sure you don't want it? Okay. So, yeah, very honored to be here to speak about Crystal Rankins. She's been with the Police Department since 2014. She's been a field training officer in evidence tech. When I started here this last spring, she was in the middle of a quite lengthy and a bit drawn-out sergeant's process, but had the chance to sit down and talk with her. And in terms of what you're looking to have a sergeant, to have an employee, to have somebody that you work with, I think Crystal's it. We talk a lot about officer safety. We talk about cars. We talk about tasers. We talked at our place recently about schedules and staffing and things like that, but this is a people business. She gets the business. She understands that, and I think we can prove that out by all of the friends and family and coworkers that are here to see her and recognize her. So, I'm going to call up Crystal real quick, and then we'll move on from there. But please, if you'll join me, Crystal. Would you like to say any words to anybody? I'm just kidding. It's fine. I had to put you on the spot. But what I'd like you to do is take my spot here at the microphone, and I know you have some family coming up to help you, so if you want to go ahead and give us their names and all that, I'll let you take over for a minute.
I have my daughter and son, my son, Demel, and my daughter, Michaela.
And then I'm just going to get in front of the mic, so here. And then I'm going to have Bob Matthews help us with the oath, and then Jill, obviously, you're in charge of where do we need to stand and do all that to get the photo ops and all that kind of stuff. And then Susie took care of all the treats and everything downstairs. So, I don't know if we have time to break or anything, but if folks want to go downstairs and socialize, recognize Crystal some more. I'll be down there shortly. But again, I just want to recognize Crystal. Thank you for all that you've done for us, and now that you have that badge pinned on and those stripes and all that things, for all the things you're going to do for us in the future. So, thank you again. We should give her another round of applause, though.
Congratulations, Sergeant Rankins. And as the chief mentioned, we'll excuse anyone who wants to go down and celebrate early from the rest of the meeting. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Matters listed into the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote of consent. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separate. I move we approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for zoning case 4666-25. I motion to open the public hearing for zoning case 466-25. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Zoning case number 466-25 is now open. The following will be the order in which the public hearing will proceed. Staff will give a report. Anyone in favor or opposed to this case will have an opportunity to speak. The board will then close the public hearing prior to taking action. The board will now hear a report from staff. Mr. McConnell, have all the legal requirements for this hearing been met, and will you present your report at this time?
Yes, Board. Thank you. So, again, we are looking at zoning commission case number 466-25, a text amendment to various articles of the township zoning resolution. The intent of the amendment is to do a couple of things. First, to add definitions to the property maintenance code to find abandoned property providing the township codify procedures for removing abandoned property, things shopping carts along, 749, 725. Additionally, the amendment will introduce language clarifying that recipients of civil citations will be responsible for all court costs involved with denying a violation charge. It also clarifies the responsibility of the Miami municipal court for handling collection fines and other costs should a recipient of civil citation deny the charge. These changes are being made simultaneously to the exterior property maintenance code and the zoning resolution. This case focuses on the changes to the zoning resolution. The changes to exterior property maintenance code are done by resolution, and they're not subject to a case, but the same text changes are being discussed, so consider them similar. So, we also, in this amendment, introduce changes to the township zoning resolution to match the Ohio revised code changes allowing townships to publish public notices for hearings on our website and social media rather than in a newspaper of general circulation. So, just going very briefly through the different proposed text changes, you see that this change to section 106 or article 304 of the zoning resolution just lists that the Miami municipal court, the Miami township fiscal office, will handle certain duties. Again, the changes to article 304 here reflect the same changes, just changing the responsibility of certain duties in this process to the court. This is something to point out. During the zoning commission hearing, a recommendation was made by the board to include the language that you see highlighted here to this change. This is the language that essentially tells a recipient that they would be responsible additionally for fine and court costs and court costs associated with us having to bring the case to a court. The zoning commission stated that they believe that this language, as it was written, was unclear and could maybe have a chilling effect on people trying to deny violation charges by reading like no matter what they would be charged court costs. So, I believe the language was made a little bit more clear to show that if the court did not find them guilty of a violation, that they may not be assessed our court costs. I believe this change reflects that. Again, adding the plus court costs to the list of monetary fines. Here is the language that defines abandoned and what abandoned materials and items are. Again, this is primarily designed to encompass things like shopping carts and other things left and right away. This would allow our zoning inspector to remove those items or for us to engage a contracted service that we've been looking at that collects shopping carts and usually comes back to their place of origin if they have certain agreements with those businesses. And then finally, we come to the changes about our public notice requirements. Again, the Ohio revised code is updated to allow now townships to advertise one of three ways, either in print or digital edition of one or more newspapers in general circulation.
I'm looking for a meeting where the public is supposed to belong to attend. Is this it?
This is it, sir.
Oh, I'm always waiting. I try my best to get here at three and a half. I'm not going to be.
We'll have public comment period later. We're in the middle of a public hearing. Thank you.
So, as I was saying, either advertise in a newspaper. There is a public website run by the state of Ohio that we can advertise on or on our website and social media accounts of the township. As an aside, I've been working with our communications director to develop SOPs, standard operator procedures, for how we will do this moving forward. It's going to save the township a fair bit of money in terms of costs associated with advertising and newspaper in general circulation as well. But these are the language changes here proposed. The same exact language is mentioned in a couple of different places in the zoning resolution. Wherever we talk about review for public notices, so those changes are made throughout the document where appropriate. Staff does recommend approval of the proposed text changes. They have been reviewed by a legal counsel as well and determined to be satisfactory. I'd be glad to answer any questions if I have to.
Any questions?
I'll add one quick comment, Board. Just wanted to take note of the fact and to thank Judge Elise Reddick. Judge Reddick spent quite a bit of time with us and our law director to review these changes and to make sure that these codes are most compatible with Judge Reddick's court. And she made several other recommendations. So, again, knowing her time is valuable, appreciated her feedback and support on this. So, between law director and Judge Reddick, I think we got to a good place where we should be able to streamline our processes.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. The board will now hear from anyone in favor or opposed to this zoning case. Are there any further public comments regarding this zoning case? Let the record be shown that there are none. I move to close the public hearing for this case and move into deliberation. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Having just closed the public hearing, I make a motion we read Resolution 65-2025 in full pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 504.10. Is there a second?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Resolution 65-2025, a resolution to adopt under home rule authority, a text amendment to the Miami Township zoning resolution, whereas Miami Township adopted a limited home rule form of government under Resolution 13-2015, and whereas Miami Township desires to exercise its home rule authority to utilize civil citations to enforce its zoning resolution, and whereas the Miami Township Board of Trustees met in a regular session on Tuesday, August 19th, 2025, and whereas zoning case 466-25 filed by the Miami Township Board of Trustees proposes amendment to Articles 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6 of the Miami Township zoning resolution, and whereas the amendments proposed in zoning case 466-25 are attached to this resolution as Exhibit A, and whereas the Miami Township zoning commission has made a recommendation of approval following a public hearing held on July 8th, 2025, whereas the Miami Township Board of Trustees reviewed said zoning case 466-25 in a public hearing during which anyone desiring to speak was heard, and whereas the Board of Trustees desires to dispense with the requirement that this resolution be read on two separate days and authorizes the adoption of this resolution upon its first reading, and therefore be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees approves the text amendment to the Miami Township zoning resolution under zoning case number 466-25 and upholds the zoning commission recommendation. I move to adopt the resolution as read. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Moving on to new business. First Resolution 66-2025, and Resolution 67, and 68, and 69, and 70, Mr. McConnell.
Yes, good evening, Board. I'll try to hustle through my resolutions here. Resolution 66-2025, this is the sort of sequel resolution to the public hearing case. Again, we were not required to review these changes through a public hearing through the zoning commission or the Board of Trustees, but as we were hearing similar materials, we went ahead and included it in the hearing just to be sure that any comments were addressed in both. But like the previous resolution, this is another home rule authority resolution, so it will have to be read in full. Again, sorry, trustee Posey, for having to read the full resolution. But again, will allow us to better enforce with the Miami municipal court. Do you have any questions on this resolution?
Any question?
67-2025, it's a resolution to authorize a jurisdictional emergency management intergovernmental agreement between Montgomery County and Miami Township. This is an agreement that Miami Township has been party to since 2002, and then again, a revised version in 2022. There is a couple of small changes in this agreement that have been recirculated through all member jurisdictions. Currently, the Miami Valley Fire District pays the township's share to be party to this agreement and is our primary representative on updates to the agreement. And they have also recommended entering into this agreement with Montgomery County. Do you have any questions over this resolution?
You may continue.
Resolution 68-2025, resolution to authorize a donation agreement. Miami Township resident Marcia Venus has met with Park Supervisor Rex Gore to discuss donation of a park bench to Cranes Run Park in memory of her late husband, Richard Venus. This agreement is intended to protect both the donation of the resident and Miami Township for receiving this asset and a kind donation to our park system. The donation was also required to be approved through the Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas, as is the case for all townships and donations to their park system. That order was attached to your reading materials. So, authorization would allow the donation to proceed with our Parks Department. Do you have any questions on 68?
You may continue.
Resolution 69-2025, resolution to enter into a project management and financing agreement with the Montgomery County Transportation Improvement District for the Austin Crossing Project. The Austin Crossing Project, that is the new name for what was previously Austin East. This is the project located directly across from Landing Way at Austin Landing. I know we've been talking about this project for several years. There is a new developer that has taken control of the project and has made rapid progress to do some land transaction, get land under control of single owner, and then file a new preliminary plan. It's a pretty complicated project, even though it's relatively small in scale. So, the township has been working with the Transportation Improvement District for really probably more than the last three months than we did over probably three years, but working to get this project under wraps from the public side. There are some right-of-way transactions required, some planning, some design necessary before we move forward with a public-private partnership with the developer. So, this would allow us to work with the TID to prepare ourselves as public entity to enter into an economic development agreement with a private developer. Vanessa Glatfelter, the executive director of the TID, is with us tonight. I'd like to invite Vanessa up to briefly talk about sort of the role of the TID within our county and also the benefits of this project for both safety and, again, an intergovernmental project.
Good evening. Again, I'm Vanessa Glatfelter. I'm the executive director for the Montgomery County Transportation Improvement District. And with me tonight is Sam Morton, who's our project director. Both of us are licensed professional engineers, which is different than the format of the TID in the past. But we've spent the majority of our career in the consulting side of things, actually designing roadways. So, I think we bring a good amount of knowledge to these projects. People ask all the time, what is the TID? So, the way, the very brief way that I explain it is that the TID is an economic development arm of the county, right? So, you've got the county engineer that really helps with the maintenance of roadways and bridges throughout the county. The TID helps to assist with projects. We're able to get things done quickly with the Ohio Revised Code and our special, I say, powers that we get to get projects moving a lot quicker. In this case, we've got Austin interchange that has been around since the early 2000s, which the TID was involved with. And it stems from way back then when we had a, we worked with ODOT to get a signal there at Landing Way. And commitments were made at that time, if we were able to ever develop that other side, how we would open up that area and that additional leg of the intersection itself. Now, the biggest reason, even though I say that the TID is an economic development arm, in this case, we're really talking about safety and our commitment to ODOT and the township to help bring a safer route on 741. You've got a signalized, un- Yes, thank you, controlled driveway there that the residents of the apartments there can just get onto 741, which is a five-lane road. And so, we've been working with ODOT. This project's been going on since 2020, actually. And so, we've worked with them to work on the right-of-way that's necessary to allow a development to happen. And we've worked with ODOT to get funding for the actual signal itself and maintenance of the roadway itself. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that you guys have been briefed on all of this, but I'm happy that we're here tonight to be able to introduce ourselves. And we're really excited to actually work on this project and move it forward and actually complete it.
Thank you for that summary. Any questions? We've gone over this quite a few times. We appreciate you being here.
I bet you have. Well, thank you again.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. Yeah, so this PMFA is a two-phase PMFA. Phase one has to do with the initial planning work, land acquisitions, appraisals, design services. And then the second phase is the right-of-way acquisition, actually acquiring it and starting construction. But this is not an automatic phase two agreement. We would have to come back and agree before we proceed to phase two of this agreement, which I anticipate we will have a development agreement with the developer in hand and ready to go to ensure that the financials of this full project really make sense before we move forward. But again, this will allow us to do the work that'll allow us to determine, does the project make sense for the developer and the township to start construction? Is there any questions? Happy to discuss.
You may continue.
All right. Resolution 70-2025 is a resolution that would allow the township administrator to execute an updated agreement to the 2017 Miami Township Dayton Joint Economic Development District contract. Several changes were made within this contract. I'll go through them quickly, but the rationale, working with the city of Dayton, there's been a lot of growth in this joint economic development district, CRG Defense, Dayton Christian Schools, First Flight Commerce Center. That has created an increased demand for services from the township, both in the Community Development Department, Finance Department, Public Works, Police. So, to, one, create parity with the other Jeds, but, two, help compensate the township for these increased demand for services, would adjust the Jed contracting party percentages from a 50-50 split to a 70-30 split leaning toward Miami Township. It would adjust the minimum distribution ratio, and it would remove a property tax revenue split. Part of the rationale there, most of the parcels in this Dayton Jed are in a TIF, so there are no actual property tax revenues to split, and it was creating sort of logistics challenge for not a lot of money. So, Dayton agreed to this. But Dayton staff, for an agreement, they will be reviewing this contracted amendment tomorrow night. Township law director has also reviewed and is in agreement with all of the changes within. If you have any questions, be happy to discuss.
Any questions?
Thank you, Board.
Mr. McGord, you have Resolution 71 and 72.
Good evening, Board. Resolution 71-2025 is a request to approve a then-and-now purchase order for some police department equipment that is, we kind of got the order mixed up on the purchase order and the invoice. However, because of the dollar amount being $5,271, it is required, is a requirement of ORC to have that approved by the trustees.
Any questions?
Resolution 72 is an amendment to the appropriation of funds for 2025. Litigation expenses are tracking higher than we anticipated, so we're needing to appropriate a few more dollars to the other expenses line in the general fund for such purposes. Be happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions? Moving on to public comments. This is the portion of the meeting where you, the residents of Miami Township, are invited to share your thoughts with the board. Please know that this time has been set aside for the board to listen to you. Your comments are valued and will be taken into careful consideration. The board will not engage in dialogue at this time, and presentations are limited to five minutes each. Is there anyone wishing to come forward and speak? Come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Timothy Coughlin, and I live at 5431 Portsmouth Way. And I presume I am part of this township, yes?
Which address did you say again, sir?
5431 Portsmouth Way. I called ahead beforehand to make sure, but the layouts are a little confusing.
You say Portsmouth Away?
Yeah. The apartment complex.
You're right at the edge, I think, but let me double check. Maybe working faster there. Why don't you tell us about your issue, and then we'll figure this out as we go along?
Okay. So, my issue is I have noticed that at the national level, there is kind of a lot of corruption, and I'm slightly concerned, and- corruption, and I'm slightly concerned, and I'm wondering if there is anything that any of you could possibly do about any of that.
Again, sir, we don't take, we don't take questions during the public comment period, but we're happy to listen to you.
Hmm, okay. Well, how do I start? So, I can't ask questions. There is a lot of corruption, and has unfortunately affected the FBI and the Department of Justice, and it would seem that they have failed us, and I am beside myself as I am unsure what is going to be done about their failure to enforce the law. Now, you can't take questions, so you can't respond to any of that. All you need to know is that there are a lot of people that are more than a little upset about apparent failures of our higher government, but they trust their local government, which would be you guys. So I was hoping maybe there was something you could do, but as you cannot answer any of my questions, it is unfortunately impossible for you to say. And I was also wondering what that other presentation was talking about, the apartment one, but you can't answer that either. So I suppose that that's all I have to say about that, just that people are generally upset with our national level of government and trust their local government, and as such, without those national leaders to protect us, we will look to you for leadership.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to consideration of resolutions and motions. I move that we read Resolution 66-2025 in full pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 504.10. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Resolution 66-2025, a resolution to adopt under home rule authority a text amendment to the Miami Township Exterior Property Maintenance Resolution, whereas Miami Township adopted a limited home rule form of government under Resolution 13-2015, and whereas Miami Township desires to exercise its home rule authority to establish standards to regulate the exterior maintenance of structures and premises within the unincorporated area of the township, whereas Miami Township Board of Trustees met in a regular session on Tuesday, August 19th, August 19th, 2025, and whereas zoning case number 466-25 filed by the Miami Township Board of Trustees proposes amendments to Sections 106, 108, 111, 202, and 302 of the Miami Township Exterior Property Maintenance Resolution, and whereas the amendments proposed in zoning case 466-25 are attached to this resolution as Exhibit A. And whereas the Miami Township Zoning Commission has made a recommendation of approval following a public hearing held on July 8th, do it again, July 8th, 2025, whereas the Miami Township Board of Trustees reviewed said zoning case 466-25 in a public hearing during which anyone desiring to speak was heard, and whereas the Board of Trustees desires to dispense with the requirements that this resolution be read on two separate days and authorizes the adoption of this resolution on its first reading. Therefore be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees approves the text amendment to the Miami Township Exterior Property Maintenance Resolution under zoning case number 466-25 and upholds the zoning commission recommendation. I make a motion we approve Resolution 66-2025 as read. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I make a motion we adopt Resolution 67-2025, a resolution to authorize a jurisdictional emergency management intergovernmental agreement between Montgomery County and Miami Township. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I make a motion we adopt Resolution 68-2025, a resolution to authorize a donation agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I make a motion we adopt Resolution 69-2025, a resolution to enter into a project management and financing agreement with the Montgomery County Transportation Improvement District for the Austin Crossing Project. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I make a motion we adopt Resolution 70-2025, a resolution to approve a first amendment to a 2017 amended and restated Miami Township Dayton Joint Economic Development District contract, and approving actions ancillary thereto. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I make a motion we adopt Resolution 71-2025, a resolution to approve then-and-now purchase order. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I make a motion we adopt Resolution 72-2025, a resolution to approve amendments to the appropriation of funds for 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Moving on to department head comments. Chief Nielsen.
I don't have much more, board, but I just want to recognize Sergeant Rankins again and just say how proud of her we are and how glad we are to have her. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Culp, on behalf of Mr. Schweiker.
First, I just want to thank you for allowing me to sit in this evening. Secondly, our new street signs are going to start appearing tomorrow in the Hardest Hill and Platte, so our foreman, John Taylor, has worked diligently building and cartography so we can put all those signs in our software.
Great. That's very exciting. Mr. McConnell.
I will just quickly bring the board's attention to an activity that we are working on with MVRPC for an active living workshop on September 10th. The study area is kind of like the Bishop Lively North part along 741. The goal is to engage the community on ways that people can find an easier time working active activities, like walking, biking, into their lifestyle rather than, rather than as a, as a, how do I want to put this, to make it an easy mesh between these healthy activities and what you're already doing in life. So, we really like the MVRPC's active living philosophy, and so we have invited them to help see what we can do in our community to encourage that. I believe we've sent you invites to attend. We would very much appreciate if you can to provide your guidance and your perspective. Again, that's September 10th at 4:30 to 6:30 at Bishop Lively. Thank you, board.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Mr. McCord, any comments?
I do not this evening, sir. Thank you.
Acting Administrator Carlson.
So while I'm acting as administrator, I did speak with township administrator Snyder, and there were a few comments that he wanted to be sure that I conveyed on his behalf. So this is, this is for me, but also from Chris. First, wanted to extend another congratulations to Crystal Rankins on her promotion to sergeant. Crystal is such an asset to our community, and anytime we're able to promote from within is a huge win and just shows the dedication of our employees to, to building Miami Township as a better community. So again, congratulations, Crystal. I also want to congratulate Chief Nielsen and the entire Miami Township Police Department on their re-accreditation from CLIA, Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. This is the department's third accreditation. It is a very strenuous process. It must be repeated every four years. So again, a significant accomplishment that shows Miami Township Police Department's commitment to a national standard of professional services. So again, congratulations, chief, on that. And finally, wanted to thank everyone who contributed to another successful national night out. There was a great turnout at the Austin Landing event that was greatly supported by a lot of our community partners, including Skyline Chili and Mission Barbecue, who very generously donated a ton of food that was free to the public. So I know that was a big hit. So again, wanted to thank them in particular for their part in making the event a success. Grateful for the partnership, and I think planning for next year starts soon, so we'll have fun with that. And that's it for me. Thank you, board.
Thank you, Acting Administrator Carlson. I'd like to add official comments. Mr. Matthews.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Culp?
None.
Mr. Berry?
None.
I would again reiterate the congratulations to Sergeant Rankins and the police department for its successes in the past few weeks. Look forward to seeing everyone at the next meeting. With that, I adjourn the meeting at 6:39.